And everybody check it. The button should be up on your microphone so that audio. Okay. Well, we will officially. Open. A continuation of the recess special meeting. This meeting is a continuation from. Special meeting at the end on May twenty second. And we're now back in session. And Jack said. I'll introduce. People in the audience here that are special, the members of the board will do a roll call. And in that way, we'll be introducing each of the. Members of the zoning commission. I'll start to my left. With Virginia Lewis.
Here, sorry.
I know you're there. Tom, me. Here. My cat were here. Joni Manson. Brittany Harper. Right, we no longer have a zoning alternate. So if there's anyone that would be interested in becoming an alternate to the zoning commission. Please let me know and also. Move forward in terms of then after that, we'll contact the trustees. They were they are the people who will actually be making an appointment if someone would. Be so. Kind and good as to step forward and. Service as an alternate. So long as we have. A minimum of three members present, we conduct business, but. Things happen sometimes, and that's why we have an alter. Okay, that all said, let's move forward with our agenda. Let me introduce. Any other officials here? First, I'll introduce Holly Maitai. Holly is president of Crossroads Community Planning, and she is a consultant. Her firm has been hired by the trustees to work with the township. Strategic Planning Commission. To bring forward recommendations for new zoning districts. And that's what we'll be considering tonight, one of the new zoning districts. Molly Ridge sitting next to her. Molly is. A planner with Crossroads Community Planning as well. The other people present. Jim Steele Smith is a member of Strategic Planning Committee. Steve Eisenbrown is a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. And sir. Would you? Did you sign in?
No.
Okay, there's just a piece of paper over there. If you would, please. Sign in as a member of the public. Is it still there? No pen?
Nope.
That's my fault. See if this one writes it does. Would you like putting it back there? That way, if anybody else comes in, there'll be a pen there for them to sign in. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do.
Not yet. Okay.
Wait, there's one person.
And who is on? Molly is saying we have one person.
There's one person.
And the name?
Beverly. There's no last name. This is Beverly.
Beverly? Okay. We usually ask them.
Yeah, that's the reason I'm asking. If there's someone there, then we would like to.
Well, they're probably waiting to get in.
Oh, I let him in because I let myself in.
Oh, you took. Okay, did you become? You want to be co-host?
Um, I think it's, that's okay. I just went up there.
Nice try. All right, if you're going to, are you going to share any screens tonight? Molly or Holly? Yes, okay. You'd be able to do it. Without being a co-host?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you've been done it that way in the past. I wasn't sure. Even though this system. Never quite know how it's going to work.
Can we have the person on Zoom tell us their name and address for the minutes?
That's so much we don't have anyone else out there to record it. That would be recorded.
Right.
Usually it. As well, but I.
Did they fix the system?
We don't think so.
I don't know.
What are you on here?
So if you are on Zoom, can you type your full name and address into the chat?
Send us a chat message that would have that information. I didn't get signed in, so I can't see what's going on. As a member of the public, we just like to know who has participated. All right, now moving on. For the conduct of the special meeting, if we will go through the agenda. We're going to be recessing so that we can begin the hearings after we. During the hearings, I'll talk about the procedures for that. And then when we finish the hearings, we will close the hearings and then come back. Reopen again our regular, our special meetings from. The recess that we will. Start in a few more minutes. At this time, let's take a look at the minutes that we have. You've seen these electronically, and you have a copy with any changes that were submitted. For Amanda Hughes to make. Any corrections? The corrections are either in red or with a strikeout. If you submitted any changes, you should see it here, and. If you've got anything else, as we go through, you can. Point that out and we'll make a note about that. Anybody have any changes or additional modifications on page one?
Page two near the bottom, there's still the. Blue mark where something was missing from the first part of that sentence. And Amanda did send me what that was, but I did not write that down. But it made sense when she sent me. Oh, but that first. This is a lot of sentences.
Yeah.
Mr. Cabler questioned if any commission members had concerns about whether or not. All of the changes. In the conditions.
Is that what was missing in that paragraph? Okay, she may have the clean copy. She retyped it in here apparently. Probably because she sent herself. I did not have Tim Mike to print off the clean copies. But Tom, which what you stated will went true, but that's in there.
I got it from somebody.
Probably from the clean copy then. Or maybe. I mean.
I think it was read out. Maybe I took it off the.
I don't know.
Amanda did send out an email saying. Addressing that question.
Yeah, I saw the email from you, so. She may have put it in that. All right, so we'll make sure that that correction gets in there. Anything else? Okay, if there's none, then I'm out of motion to approve the minutes from Monday, maybe the workshop meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes. As corrected.
All right, Joni, thank you. Joni Manson moved, and the second was by.
Brittany.
Brittany, thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? If you're none and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion is approved. Minutes are approved as correcting.
Oh, Mike, really quickly, Beverly just typed in the chat and said it's Ron and Beverly Fanzler. At ten six eighty Fancher Road.
Thank you very much, Ron Beverly. We appreciate you providing us with that.
It's ten six eighty Fancher.
They live right near the corner of six oh five. Okay. Now, let's take a look at the special reading minutes for May twenty two. Very short. There were very few corrections on this one, except we did. We got Molly's name corrected and a couple of Kypos. Anything else?
I have a question at the bottom of the last sentence. It says that we recessed the meeting. Until seven thirty P M. Is that? But here it says seven forty five. Is that the same thing?
That's the hearing. This was the special meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. We're now in the special meeting. Right out of recess, but we're not in the hearing yet.
Okay.
Oh, well.
All right. Just wanted.
That was at the end of the meeting, yes.
Yes, okay.
Because we didn't. Wanted to have to schedule another special meeting. We just recessed the same one because it's when we did the hearing. Okay, so a motion on these.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May twenty second as corrected.
Okay, Joni has moved. And I think I heard Brittany second again. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries. Minutes are approved as corrected. And then the hearing. Minutes from May twenty two. Which that hearing was not closed. That hearing was recessed to tonight. So there will be additional minutes. Prepared that'll go along with these. For tonight's hearing. May twenty second. Again, we've got the corrections that are identified in here. Are there any additional corrections to these minutes?
I make a motion. We approve the. Hearing minutes of May twenty second as corrected.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Joni moved. Brittany seconded. Approve as corrected. All those, whoops. Any further discussion first? We watch it for anybody. Okay, apparently we're fine. All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, these minutes are approved as corrected. Okay, then that brings us to. New business. We have no additional. New business for tonight. Old business. Not really business per se, but I guess I would. Want to point out that as we're looking forward to the workshop meeting in June. At that meeting, we had indicated that the two articles we would have. Scott began to take a look at. Would be Article nine and Article eleven. And. I've asked Mike, we're trying to determine. What specific. Districts may have been used. In the township. Now, we do have on the zoning map some places that are zoned. Low-density residential are too. I didn't think we had any. But. Mike and I haven't got together to verify that. I think it's might be a mistake from. Zoning Commission, but I'm sorry, not zoning. Regional Planning Commission. Because they're the ones who. Put that information in. But we'll go back and verify whether or not we have any.
Mike Cannon spoke to Scott Sanders about that last Thursday at the Regional Planning Commission meeting. And Scott said that they have. Records of whenever a zoning change is made, they have records of when that was done. So they can go back and look at those particular.
Oh, that's good. I didn't. I didn't know that. Mike, I shared that.
Yeah, so we.
Though it's continuing to be in process to determine. Now, we know that Plan Residential District, we've done that one. Because we've got color pines. So anyway, those are the two, and those would be straight districts, of course. And just wanted to point that out that we are doing that. We did have a. An initially a problem with Center Village in Harlem because. Those were incorrectly marked on the zoning map, and that has been changed. So we know we got that part fixed. So that those two special districts now have right coding on those. Anyway, we'll continue to follow through on that to get the map. Accurate. Seven forty five. So with that. We can recess our special meeting. And move to the hearing. And before we go into the hearing, I need to call the roll again. All those, when I call your name, just say here, please. No new people here, so we'll just go through and introduce everybody by roll call. Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Tom Dean.
Here, please.
Mike Gavler here. Joni Manson.
Here.
Brittany Harper.
Here.
All right. Recessed hearing from May twenty two is now back in session. All right, at this point, what I would suggest that we do is we have the summary. That Holly has provided. Holly and Molly have provided, which contains. All the changes. That we discussed, and we also have copies of the articles. Beginning on the twenty second, and these are red line versions. So the red line version should match. Changes that are listed in the letter. That we have. Is this a summary of the CRCD development standards with all the changes? The other thing that we have, and I'm going to pass it out, are. We received a letter. Today. From Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Which would include. The recommendations that they have made to us. That's just the cover letter and then.
Is that two? No, only one.
Two.
Sure. I have to wait a second. I have to.
There you go. Thank you. We're set. And then here's the changes that. Were recommended here on the week two, one for you, one for. All right. It'll be nice when we have a new administrative assistant so that these things will be here and. Ready for all of us in a folder.
That would be lovely.
So I thought we would maybe go ahead and do this as we had done previously. We'll go through. The changes. And looking at what. Regional planning has provided same time. That we deal with what. Follow up from the changes that we did at our last. Hearing on the twenty second. So. Starting through that process. Molly, you want to bring up the documents so that those members of the audience who publicly who are here?
Do you want to start with Article thirty three or the?
We're going to start. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Article thirty three. We'll start with that. That's the one that. Public will be most interested in. And you're showing the red line district. But our version, I mean, sorry. That. For the audience. Public, the changes that are in red are changes that we discussed. To get at our hearing on the twenty second, which we recessed and moved forward to today. And as we go through, we'll also then identify. What it is that the regional planning has recommended. They recommended approval. On a conditional basis. And just for the record, we will include. This document as part of the record that'll go forward from this point. Staff comments. Regarding clustered residential conservation district, subarea A encompasses roughly thirty five acres.
Thirty five hundred acres.
Thirty five hundred acres, sorry. Misspoke. That is bound by Center Village Road and Montgomery Road to the north. South County Line Road to the east. Robbins Road and Gorsuch Road to the south. And Red Bank Road to the west. Much of this land area is undeveloped and noted as. Two developmental units per acre. Clustered residential conservation district, subarea B. Roughly thirty five hundred acres of land, south of subarea. A and north of Delaware and Franklin County line. Much of this land is also undeveloped and noted as three developmental units per acre. Given that growth pressure continues to come from the north, from Columbus and New Albany areas, the city of Columbus has initiated the planning and construction of a tunnel. Which will bring sewer service to this part of Delaware County, and the recent announcement that Intel is making significant investments in Lincoln County just to the east. Harlem Township is taking a proactive step. In updating its zoning code. Sewer will most likely be necessary to allow for the minimum permitted lot sizes ranging from seventy five hundred square feet. In subarea B and ten thousand square feet in subarea A. The proposed overlay in this location will help preserve the rural. Residential character of the area and protect vast amounts of open space within the township. The recently reviewed mixed-use overlay is located just south of subarea B. Which will buffer the CRCD area from any future development in Franklin County. Examples of permitted uses include. Single-family detached dwellings, column wall, single-family. Attached. dwellings. I'm sure that's probably the next word, and accessory buildings. The maximum dwelling units per net developable acre is two units in area A and three units in area B. For property to be considered for the overlay, the following standards must be met. But not limited to. Minimum twenty five acre tract in both subareas. Minimum seventy five hundred square feet foot lots in subarea B, ten thousand square foot lots in subarea A. Fifty percent open space. Two hundred foot woodland buffer, protection of drainage paths, streams and floodplains. Historic and archaeological sites, and provide pedestrian circulation and connections to other developments. Standards for building design, lighting, landscaping, parking and signage is also identified in the CRCD overlay. Central sanitary sewer is required for the utilization of this overlay. However, if sanitary sewer is proposed, the Delaware County. S E office.
Sanitary engineer.
Sanitary engineer, yes. Must verify sewer service and capacity needs can be met. That. The zoning commission may grant divergences from any standard or requirement in this section with the exception of density. Permitted uses and the percentage of required open space. We'll follow in our comments and suggestions. All right, now we're down to the comments, and since we said we're going to start with overlay. The CRCD, we'll go through each of these as we then go through the document. Does that make sense to everybody? Molly and Molly and. Mission members. Okay. So. First. Area, let's take a look at the changes that we made. The first comment, we removed all the blue text and underlining for definitions. That's I'm saying we, but that's Holly and Molly. As they went through the document, they took care of that. Section thirty three oh one. Molly and Holly, I'll let you take over.
Sure. So. Starting from there, in section thirty three oh one, we added reference that this is a planned unit development. Right at the beginning there.
Could I? Could I ask one thing? Do we have to call it a planned unit development because we have a P U D in our zoning code, which is differed from this? Can we just call it a planned development?
We were.
That comes from the revised code, right? Correct. Five nineteen point oh two one refers to four different types of P U Ds, and they don't distinguish. It by that name. They're all P U Ds. So that's why we referenced it that way.
Okay, we just have to be careful that people don't confuse it. With.
But we do specifically state in there, it's a five nineteen point oh two one C. So that's how we're distinguishing that.
And as we discuss it, we'll. Probably almost always be referring to it as CRCD. Clustered residential conservation district. So that that should help to avoid the confusion.
So then there's some grammar edits in here. The next big change is in C. That. Addition in red was taken from I at the end, so I has been removed, and then. That information has been added to. C there.
Okay.
In section thirty three oh two, we've changed the map below to figure thirty three point one. And then this is also where there is a comment. From county planning. They wanted us to change the map name, which we. Already addressed with you last time, and then they also want us to add Red Bank Road and Hughes Road to the map, which we will do as well.
Were you able to get those in?
No, I I think I had these finished before.
Before you knew that. Gotcha.
Yeah, we haven't made any of the regional planning.
Right, because this would not have occurred until Thursday, and you had completed your. Updated draft. On Wednesday.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Okay, but you are going to take the.
But you're going to do it, add these. Roads to the map. Okay, so that will be a change that will be included.
Correct.
And you're going to take the. Mixed use out of the title.
Yeah, that should, if you have a clean copy, that should already be done on the clean copy, but.
Johnny, this page is now. This next page. I think we have an extra page on here. It still shows.
Oh, yeah, I was looking at the first one. I was like.
If you have the red line version, the first map actually has a red.
Red line.
Okay. Because of the red. And then the second page is the clean copy.
Got it.
Oh, yeah.
So then moving on to thirty three oh three, just again referencing the figures. Some grammar here. We changed, we took a line out of the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph. That was then moved to the last paragraph in the section. It just seemed to flow better that way. And then we took out some repetitive language in the fifth paragraph as well. And this was also where the county had. A request. We need to reference the procedure section as well. Instead of just Article thirty three, so adding a reference to Article through thirty two throughout section thirty three oh three, and we'll do that.
So I think in the third paragraph. Such an application shall be made in accordance with the regulations of this article. And I think they were saying that should be. The reference both thirty two and thirty three. Okay. And that'll be also in the fourth regulations of Article thirty.
And so it's, there's a couple references. There's one in the third. Fourth, fifth and sixth, and I've noted all those on my. So I'll have those updated. Changed some of, so in the last paragraph, instead of the zoning commission, it's the Township Board of Trustees as discussed last time as well. And then moving down to thirty three oh four, we added language.
Can I ask you a question? One, two, three, four, the fifth and sixth paragraphs. Just to explain the logic there, if if the first one starts, if the zoning commission determines that an application and development plan. Do not comply with the regulations. And the sixth paragraph, if the Township Board of Trustees determines that the application and development plan. Comply with the regulations of Article thirty three. So in the one, in one case, you're only saying. If it doesn't comply, this is what we do. And in the other case, you're saying if it does comply. This is what they do, but not both.
We can add to the zoning commission one. We'll add that if it does comply, you'll recommend approval. And then I would say we should do the same thing under the trustees. Also add. The opposite, so we have both. Potential decisions referenced in both paragraphs.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So one of the things in the world will ask, I'll ask that you do is that you will. Document. Document these changes that we're talking, potentially talking about here. Uh, in terms of making. And as we do it, um, that one particular one now that since we've talked about that, I guess today. From the point of view of the board, of the zoning commission, does anyone object to this change?
No, no.
Because at the end, we're going to end up potentially having a list of changes that. We will both approve, but right now, I'm just saying, as we move forward, no one has any concerns. Good. Go, go ahead.
So then moving down to permitted uses, um, we've added that open space. Must comply with the approved development plan, um, and then. County planning also had a request here, um, so for open space C. Um, they say that the details of this are repeated in section thirty-three oh seven B. And so they recommend um, just saying open space period here and then moving this information into that larger section that describes.
Um, or, 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 I, I didn't read it the same way, I thought. They were saying to reference section thirty-three oh seven B. In this paragraph. Just add. So something, if you're sent of the gross track acreage reserved for open space as per section thirty-three oh seven B.
I read it as well. Okay.
Is that? That's less of a change.
So what, we're, we're going to add a statement. Where are we going to put that? Where we think that we want to insert that.
I can put it. Right, so it's an open space, fifty percent of the gross track acreage reserved for open space as described in section thirty-three point.
Should we say as described or as required?
Well, if it's a requirement, probably we should use that word, yes.
Yeah.
Thirty-three oh seven B.
Alright, so then, um, moving into section thirty-three point oh five prohibited uses. And some other formatting and grammar things here, um, the removal of the sentence about a conditional use permit. I've added a line about um. Allowing construction equipment that is in working order here. Let's see what else.
Last of these pieces.
The other district. Yes, and that was listed also in the mixed-use district. Section thirty-three point oh six, no major changes here. Section thirty-three point oh seven and A, we've added gross for in front of trap size. Um, the minor wording things throughout. Removal of the word asphalt. Um, regarding bike paths. Yes, that's at the bottom of page six.
Just as, as. I'm, I went back and, and finally found thirty-three oh seven B for the open space thing that we just. Got rid of almost everything. Um, thirty-three oh seven B. Doesn't have anything uh, about uh, limited agricultural uses, I don't think. Which we did have in thirty-three oh four. But we're getting rid of that.
Well, that's because thirty-three point oh four is what is permitted, right? You don't have to do thirty-three point oh four, it's what the permitted uses are, thirty-three point oh seven are the required.
But aren't we getting rid of everything? Besides just the, the one sentence for, no? Okay, I was under the impression we were changing it to open space. Fifty percent of gross track they've reached reserve for open space as required in thirty. Three oh seven B and then nothing else.
Nope, the rest of it's staying.
Okay.
Adding that little phrase.
Oh, okay, I see what you're asking, yeah. Now, we were taking anything else out.
Okay.
Just putting that phrase in.
Thank you.
Um, Molly, before you go on, on section thirty-three oh seven on our copies. Uh, there are page numbers, is it just an artifact of the? Of the way this is being printed, or are they? Coming out, I mean, they, they shouldn't be any page numbers.
Oh. This is just so you can know what page we're on.
Okay, but it's not gonna be.
Yeah, that's just for, so we can talk and tell you where we are.
Gotcha, okay. Just.
So then on. Page six, there are minor wording things. Moving on to page.
Um, I would ask on page six. Under C three. Uh, where that sentence ends based on section thirty-three point oh seven point D. In most other places, it says of this article, and I don't know if that's. Important or just. Nitpicky. As I tend to be.
Might as well.
Doesn't hurt anything. It's not gonna hurt anything either way, but we'll add it in.
Putting it in, trying to be consistent. All right.
We'll move on to page seven. Um, um, you had a comment last time about adding. I can't remember what it was exactly, it was something about two hundred feet of. The floodplain or an additional buffer, so I found something um. That another community has done, and so. In addition to no construction being allowed in the one hundred year floodplain, no development is permitted within a hundred feet of a high water line of a riparian or wetland area. Which we felt might be a bit more.
Yeah, because if you go two hundred feet beyond the floodplain, you could be significantly impacting the developable area.
Yeah. Um, and I haven't gotten into it deep enough, so I'm, I'm happy with what you've done. And whether other community, other, other communities have done two hundred feet. Maybe they haven't. And maybe it's worked and maybe it hasn't worked, so we're kind of treading in. Unknown territory right here. Uh, but I did see that you added that, that the high water line of a riparian or wetland area. Who knows what's gonna happen with wetlands? After this week's Supreme Court decision, they may be. You know, out the door. So. Who knows?
No, there's still wetland areas, it's just that. The Corps of Engineers doesn't have to consider them when they're giving permits.
If they're not. Connected to. A. What kind of body of water, a moving body of water. They're out.
Yeah, then the Corps doesn't have to consider them for permits, but. Everybody knows they're still.
They're still wet.
But you're still gonna sink in. When it's wet.
Well, yeah, but you can backfill them and you can do all kinds of stuff and, and destroy them. And I think the Supreme Court decision said, go ahead. That's, that was my take, anyway. A hundred feet for now. Molly, could you read that as if I didn't change it?
Yes, it says, no, no construction of buildings is allowed inside the one hundred year floodplain. In addition, no development is permitted within a hundred feet of the high water line of a riparian or wetland area.
Thank you.
Hmm. Alright, so the next change we have, um, is just labeling the table. The correct numbering system. Um, there's also some clarifying language on this page and then just again minor wording and formatting.
Uh, let me ask you something about private drives, because this comes up um, in thirty-three oh seven Q. Which we aren't up to yet, but. Uh, they're asking about setbacks from a private drive. In perimeter setbacks, should we have all other local roads and private drives? Is that where that belongs? So that's a check. Um, and in G. Um, I think it's a change we talked about, but it, it was, I don't think it's captured and maybe that's intentional. Um, the third line of G. Uh, normal swales, water courses and drainage areas and prevent any downstream impact. Um, and I had added any upstream or downstream impact, impact, because if you dam a water course. And it backs up, it's not gonna back up downstream, it's gonna back up. Upstream, so.
It's gonna impact upstream.
I think we just missed one.
Um, in that same stormwater section, um. We've added and wetlands, so it's regional detention ponds and wetlands.
Yeah.
Um, change it from detention pond to stormwater feature. Um, we initially had condominium drives for I and we've changed that to read private drives as well. Um, the name of the manual has been updated to be the correct name. Um, I as well. Um, and then on K. We took out asphalt, we added a minimum of five feet, um, and added some language about connectivity here as well. Um, so K pass is also where the county had a comment. Um, and it was a comment that they had made also about the MU mixed-use district. That was saying that um, requiring bike and walk, walking paths to meander might go against um, existing requirements, um, and we. As you remember, decided to keep it as is. Um. So I think I would recommend keeping it as is here as well.
Well, we basically were considering what they're suggesting and our, our determination will be to leave it as is.
Yes, okay.
Making sure that it's clear to us and hopefully it will also be clear to the public that is paying attention to this going forward.
So then in L, uh, street trees, we've added the word natives to read native deciduous broadleaf street trees. For M, we've added the table numbering. Um, and we've also added a minimum lot width of eighty feet or wider for all common wall, um, attached dwellings.
Yes, good, uh, Molly on M. Um. Is. Uh, the table thirty-three point two. Um, is not over the table where, where, where they normally. Yeah, so I don't know if that was Vulcan area requirements in essence, saying C table thirty-three point two and then add. The line that says ta, this is table thirty-three point two.
Okay, nitpicky, that's okay.
Yes, it's my middle name.
Alright guys.
Or adding phrase, is it gonna be in parentheses, Dom?
It isn't in other things, it just says C or.
C table thirty-three point two, and then there'll be a heading on the table.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it.
So moving below the table, um, there was a sentence that wasn't supposed to be there, so that's been removed. Um, there's also just minor wording and formatting things and. In O is where um, there's some changes, um, these changes are consistent with what we. Had in the MU as well, there was just some confusion about the language saying eighty percent and then twenty percent, so this has been updated to. Match the format of the approved mixed-use district.
So, page ten?
Yes, so then moving to page ten, um, in P, street lighting, we have. Um, the height of a, of street lighting being measured from the established grade and then figure thirty-three point two labeled. That's all for page ten. So then moving to page eleven.
Um, a question on, on page nine and, and eleven, where there's, where we have the illustrations. And two, we'll have photo credits. One has a photo credit, we're both, whatever. Should these be labeled as figures with figures? Or not?
We debated that, and at least I debated that myself. With myself, and I decided that the photos with the photo credits shouldn't be figures, but. I'll leave that up to you guys.
The second photo on page nine doesn't seem to have a credit.
Yeah, we'll find the credit.
Terms of whether we're gonna use a figure for the photos or not, the, the question was asked, we didn't give you an answer.
She answered, she says no.
That's what I agree with. All right, just, just make sure, I wanna make sure we get to the end and she's gonna give us a summary of the changes we're agreeing to. All right.
So then, um, back on page eleven, there's just wording, um, changes here in. What number is this? In Q five I, we've added um, state roads as well, instead of just county and township roads. Um, figure thirty-three point three is correctly labeled. And that moves us on to page twelve.
Uh, it just brings up a, a question, and do we need to pull in private drives into this or is that overkill?
So five, existing tree lines.
No, we don't want two hundred foot setback from private drives.
No, 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 we don't. So, okay, and, and that was one of the questions that they asked, number six.
Thirty-three oh seven Q five I, yeah.
Is there a setback from a private drive and we're not specifying any setback?
For the buffer, no, it's just that thirty foot setback for the buildings. That we put up at the top.
Alright, ready? That's on page twelve, um, this is also language, um, that was in the mixed-use district, so. The following types of undesirable trees and shrubs has been added shall be provided as well as any other invasive or undesirable species. Um, and then Japanese honeysuckle was added to this list as well. The table here has been labeled as well and the title's been updated to be a little bit more descriptive. And then the figures are labeled as well going on to um. Page thirteen.
So the, at the very bottom of page twelve where it says example buffer figure thirty-three point four. Will that go with the figure? So it's not an orphan.
Yeah, on the, on the clean versions, I made sure that.
The page breaks were right.
All be together, yeah.
Okay. Cause that happened a couple of times, I think. Okay.
Yeah, the red, the red line, you can't. Go on formatting.
Okay, so then. That brings us to page thirteen. Um, we just took out some language here that didn't really make sense for that location. Then page fourteen, um, the next changes are in parking. The table's been labeled, um, we've added the word off-street for. Required off-street parking spaces, and then we've also taken out walking paths from needing um. Any sort of parking requirement there.
And then there's another awkward break at the bottom of the page.
Again, it's because of the beat of red line.
Yeah, yeah. It's not what it's gonna look like.
So then just minor formatting on the bottom of page fourteen there. Moving on to page fifteen, again, figures are labeled. Um, and then some wording.
I, I went over this trying to figure out whether. So on page fourteen under S. You have one sign shall be designed. Two ground-mounted signs. And then. On page fifteen, I think it should be three temporary signs.
Yes, it should.
And then window sign should be four.
And then the whole, all the numbering all the way through.
Yeah.
Four, five. Give me a photo credit for page sixteen.
Yeah, you, you missed one before, I caught it, you didn't say it, but I noted it.
Then on page sixteen, um, the only other, other edits are just minor grammar and wording. Then on page sixteen, um, the only other other edits are just minor grammar and wording and labeling. Um, age fifteen or seventeen, I'm sorry. Um, divergences has been updated with the correct um, board, so instead of zoning commission, it's the board of trustees. Um, it references the approval process. Um, and has added density of dwelling units per acre is something that cannot be um, diverged from. So then that goes into um, section thirty-three oh eight, the county had a comment here, so let's see, um. They want or think that this section should be moved to a general requirement section within the larger zoning code. Um. This section is also in the current PRCD within the text as it is here, um. So if the PRCD is being edited, maybe that would be an opportunity to move it. But also in this text, we do have written that um, all of the requirements in this section. Supersede things that are listed in the general requirement, so maybe it's best to just keep all of the requirements here.
I like having all the requirements here.
Pick up something and hand it to a developer instead of having them flip through to find different things.
And I'm I'm concerned about moving it somewhere else. I I would agree, I would rather leave it here, even though they're making from. So that we considered it, but we're going to leave it the way it is.
Well, and I think the difference is with the procedures, we've talked about being okay with pulling those out so that we can get more uniform procedures, but these aren't. Procedures, these are specifics about. So, yeah, I think.
Specific zoning district.
Yep.
So then also in that section, um, there was reference to a joint economic development agreement that's been taken out because that doesn't apply here. And moving on to page eighteen, only minor changes here, just with formatting and numbering. Page nineteen, very similar, small changes, um, and then page twenty, um. That line number three, talking about funding for an MCA, um, has been removed because that was repeated in the text above, so it was just repetitive.
Okay. Article thirty-three, uh, we completed that and we've also looked at all the recommendations that have been submitted to us by. Before we start on article thirty-two, I'd like to take a break in terms of opening it up for public. Uh, because I know that um, there may be some questions that relate specifically to this article, so at this point. Uh, we'll open it up for the public to ask any questions or to make any comments that they may have.
And we should remind everyone on Zoom that we cannot hear them, so if you have a comment, you have to put it in the chat.
Thank you, Virginia, and for those persons who are present that may wish to speak or make a comment or ask us a question, please go over to the podium. And uh, speak in that area and using the microphone, because even though we can't hear the people who. Are pretend are participating via Zoom, they can hear us, so we want them to hear you and we want it also to be recorded. So anyone in the audience that uh, uh, or on Zoom, as was stated. If you will submit your comment as Virginia described, then we will read it. Uh, into the record so that other people will also know what it is that you asked or presented to us. And please identify yourself by name and address when you go to the microphone. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Atkins, I'm at one, two, five, four, zero Robbins Road. Uh, Westerville, Ohio, four, three, eight, two. Um, one thing I saw on here that. I'm wondering, I'm not sure what it means, but what is a common wall single family dwelling?
It is a really long term for a duplex or a twin unit. We only use that term because it was in their existing zoning code, but that's what it means.
Okay, so basically, uh, it's duplexes or condos. Okay. Um. Okay, that's all I got for now.
Any other questions, sir? Mr. Atkins?
No.
That's it, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Joe Simonello, seven, eight, five, eight, Calverton Square, New Albany, Ohio. Um, understand the the change uh, around the floodplain. I think the wording that no development can happen within a hundred feet. Uh, of a floodplain and are we talking the hundred year floodplain?
We didn't, we're not doing the floodplain for. Like FEMA floodplain, we're doing the high watermark, so sometimes the FEMA floodplain is broader than that.
Okay, so more the floodway.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep. That.
Um.
They, they wanted two hundred feet from the floodplain.
Right, and.
We came down to a hundred feet from the high watermark.
Okay, so I'm not as well versed, but if the high watermark is less, if it. Does define floodway, I could see that. Cause there's a lot of times that's good for park ground. It's good for structures, it's good for stormwater. Otherwise, you end up with stormwater further away and and run more pipe, so. I think that helps answer my question because to say no development, when you might want to have park structures. Um, bridges, paths, different things like that, so.
No residential development.
Cause you.
Really what we're referring to.
No construction of buildings is allowed inside the hundred year floodplain, in addition, no development, you would, no residential development.
I thought just was the word development.
Add the word residential.
Or.
More of our intent is residential.
Residential structure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking, Joe.
We're just going to add the word residential.
Residential structures. Instead of residential develop or instead of development.
How about our online folks, is there anything that came in? I don't, I can't see it.
I don't think anyone has.
Well, it's R permitted.
Comments.
Nope, no comment.
Okay, very good. Right, well, with that then.
We do have, sorry, we do have somebody new on Zoom, so again, if you are on Zoom, if you could please put your full name and address. Into the chat for us, we're having mic issues and can't hear you, but would like to have that in our records, thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. All right, and we'll go ahead and move forward to uh, article thirty-two. Article thirty-two is the procedure to apply for the conservation subdivision. Uh, PRS, the uh, CRCD. And let's go ahead and begin going through that with uh, noting the changes that we. Made at the last one, and then as we go through, we'll do the same thing. Uh, with the input from Delaware Regional Planning Commission, so back to you, Molly.
So starting in the preamble here, um, we've referenced article thirty-three and um. Thirteen applicable before it was just article thirteen. Um, and then we've also removed language that's included um, elsewhere in the section, so just. Trying to clean this up a bit, making it a little bit more user friendly. Moving down to thirty-two oh one.
Um, can I ask you something about the preamble? Um. It, I think it's the end of the first sentence through the process defined in this section. I think they're showing you through the process to find in this article. Um, and you've done. Uh, a tremendous job of changing trustees to Board of Township Trustees, except in a couple of cases you missed.
You like how I started it with a compliment so that you feel like.
And. Should article thirteen come before article thirty-three?
Switch them in order, go ahead.
I just asked.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, okay, so then um, section thirty-two oh one. Um, we've added that applicant shall submit a conceptual development plan and then reference this throughout the section. Um, we've also added intermittent water courses instead of just permanent water courses in A. Um, B for the onsite walkabout, um, the applicant or representatives, and then up to two members of the zoning commission has been had it here. Um, C is no longer a preliminary review meeting, it's a review meeting um, for the conceptual development.
And I assume that was a conscious choice, I mean, we had talked about it. Back and forth informal develop, informal discussion back to, and I think, Tony, you wanted to have a. A review meeting to have something more more formal, I guess that's, that's how we left it.
That's how we had it in our notes.
Okay.
Then section thirty-two oh two, trip generation and connectivity memo, um, the manual name has been updated here. And then I just spelled it out again in number four, just so it's a little bit more clear. Um, this is where um, the county had its first comment, um. It was a similar comments what they had in the mixed use district, saying that the language here might. Conflict with um, what the county engineer. The office would want, but we had spoken with the county engineer and they approved this sort of language, so. Um, I would recommend keeping it as is, this is also how it is in the mixed use. Um, in the same section, though, they also. Suggested adding language about the trustees or the zoning commission, um, being able to. Or, excuse me, require additional road connectivity here, um. I don't necessarily think that's a problem, but wanted to hear what you all thought about that.
But don't we have that? Up at the top. And three, I mean, I guess three is the recommendation of the Delaware County, he's just wanting to say. That there, you know, upon the recommendation, the zoning commission can require it, is that what he's trying to say there?
I think so. Additional road connectivity or other features of concern.
So. I don't think this is the right section for that. This is just saying, go get the memo from Delaware County. They are going to recommend either a traffic analysis or traffic impact study. And some connections if if they think connections need to be made. If you re, for you to require the connections, we should have that over in the development.
Thirty-three.
Not the procedure section.
And don't we have something about?
We do.
Connections.
We do, I think he just, I think that regional planning was just looking in the wrong.
Looking at this as a standalone and not.
Yeah, so I think we're okay.
Cause we've got it into the uh, the standard for the district itself.
Right.
That would be in thirty-three somewhere.
Yeah.
So the wording that that we have, we're in agreement, we basically want to leave it the way that it is as.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, I I have one, one question about um, thirty, thirty-two oh two. B. Uh, the second line. Um. I don't know that the Delaware County Engineers Office generates the memo. I thought that they, that in independent engineer hired by the developer.
Uh, they do that memo.
Okay.
We've had the conversations with the Delaware County Engineers Office, and they actually generate that a letter called the. Trip generation letter.
Is it? A problem with the wording then, should it be changed and say trip generation connectivity ladder as opposed to memo? I don't know that it makes that much difference.
That makes a difference.
But if they, they generate something in writing.
Yeah. Yep, the only time the third party engineer comes into effect is if you guys feel like you disagree with. What their engineer is saying or the county engineer is saying, then you can.
Bring in an independent, yeah. Okay, I'm fine, we need to make any change. Everybody comfortable, go ahead, all right, Molly?
So then moving into C, um, the numbering was just off a bit, so I updated that, and then that moves us into section thirty-two oh three fees. Um. P County also had comments here, um, they recommended relocating the fee section to the general requirement section. Um, this section verbatim is in the approved mixed use procedures. So for continuity, I think it should stay, um, this was also language that was developed by our legal counsel and put where it is. Um, but the county asked us to break up the text into multiple paragraphs, probably just for. Reader friendliness, which we can probably do.
But if it's already like this in the MU, then.
Just because legal counsel gave it to us this way, so I'd rather leave it.
And I think we talked about that this entire section was in red at some point and it was verbatim.
It was verbatim what legal counsel gave us.
All right, um. So, let me read a sentence and then you tell me what it means. Uh, as soon as reasonably practi- practicable, following the submission of an application for approval of a development plan. Zoning Commission Chair and Zoning Inspector shall decide if it needs a professional consultant. To assist it in reviewing the application, what is it?
Where are you?
I mean, thirty, what what is now thirty-two oh three fees, about a third of the way down.
The word it is referring, I suppose, to the zoning commission here and the zoning inspector, right?
I don't know.
I think in on mine, I had crossed out it and put in they and changed it to need.
Well.
Yeah, but they had said we didn't want to change it, that's what legal counsel had. I just don't want to change it just because that's, we copied and pasted it in there. I know, Tom, it bothered me too, it's grammatically incorrect.
But, but if somebody reads this and says, what am I supposed to do?
You contact the zoning commission and the zoning inspector, and they determine if professional consulting services. Are needed.
I I think I would have preferred language like. Uh, zoning commission chair and zoning inspector shall decide. Um, if a professional consultant is needed.
Yeah, well, but like you're saying, it is what it is. So we live with, I guess.
So then section thirty-two oh four, um, we've added a minimum of ten hard copies and an electronic copy, which was missing initially.
Um, we. Can we get our like photo credit for the fees thing, can we do a photo credit but a legal council credit so that if that comes back to bite us, we can just say no, go talk to them, it's not us.
Yeah.
So then on the rest of this page three, there's not really much, just a minor. So then on the rest of this page three, there's not really much, just a minor correction. Page four, um.
Well, before you move on, just one quick question, uh, going back to Holly, uh, on this paragraph. You don't want to break it up at all into.
I mean, breaking it up is not gonna be a de- a de- uh. Make a difference. So I'm fine with breaking it into paragraphs if you want to do that, that's.
I think though, since we haven't done that for the MU. Then at this rate, I mean, do we want to?
Well, that's, that's a good point. It's already this, it's already this way in the other.
Yeah, so I said, leave it.
They didn't point that out for that one, did they?
Guys can change it when you do the overall.
Yeah. Let's leave it alone. That's fine with me.
Um, on page four, twenty and twenty one, you have some links that have been pulled. And under sixteen. At the end of that, since sections thirteen point oh seven and thirty three point oh seven is applicable, I don't know.
I'm sorry, say that one.
At, at the end of sixteen, ed- adding the word as applicable. If I just pulled it in from somewhere else. From nine.
Page five. Get the red lines or the hyperlinks out on that one. Um, and then also removed um, jets from this, cause that does not apply here.
So in, on page five, on thirty one. Um, tract was capitalized and announced.
It's not supposed to be capitalized. It's not capitalized anywhere else.
And six, at the bottom, at the end of six, it is.
At the end of six.
Yep.
Page six. We've added a reference, um, two references to Article thirty three. Um, in addition to Article thirteen. And then we've also added permitted uses, um, which may not be diverged from as well.
Yes, good.
Then Section thirty two oh five.
Okay, just a clarification here. You got rid of jets in number thirty three, but. Tiffs are still good?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so Section thirty two oh five has language added that was removed from. The, the very beginning of um, this article, just seemed to fit better in this section, made more sense for the flow.
Also in thirty two oh five, didn't the. Planning Commission want us to remove shall?
Oh, yes. In my updated version, I've updated that first sentence to what they recommended. So it now says, upon receipt of said application, the Harlem Township Board of Trustees shall review the development plan and the zoning commission's recommendations, so on and so forth.
Okay, so that's. That just follows there. So we considered it and followed what they wanted.
So then page seven.
Um, I would ask at the bottom of page six, in condition of approval. Three, three or four lines from the bottom. Um, said property in accordance with the, with ORC three forty nine, um, I would. I would add the word chapter, just ORC Chapter three forty. And on the first line, approved by the, I would add the word Township Board of Trustees.
Moving on to page seven.
Page seven, yeah.
Excuse me, thirty two oh seven, C, um, I just updated, um. Did not have said mixed use overlay, so I just updated that there. Um, D is drainage features instead of drainage structures is requested. And then just minor.
Yeah, and, and on the third line on that page again, it's ORC Chapter three forty nine. Um, and the, the last sentence of that first paragraph at the top of page seven. No permits or certificates of zoning compliance shall be issued by the zoning department. Until such time that all real property. Use that is part of an application has joined. And NCA is required herein. All real property use, I'm not. Is that?
Where are you?
It's the last line in that paragraph at the top of page seven.
So I'd really start until such time that all real property. Is the word use belonging, that, that all real property that is part of an application. Has joined. And NCA is required herein. I, I don't know what the word use. Unless you had some specific intent. Page, page seven.
Page seven, little top paragraph.
This is the word, the use that they.
Okay.
I don't think the word use goes there. All real property that is part.
So the word you shouldn't be there, is, just should be deleted.
So then thirty two oh seven, just a big touch on those change areas. It goes to thirty two oh eight, Section thirty two oh eight. Um, in B, we're calling it an amendment, not a modification, and then the correct section reference thirty two point eleven, um, has been referenced here. Section thirty two oh nine and thirty two oh ten, there's no change. And then in Section thirty two eleven on page nine, um, clarification that the Board of Trustees' action is final and only appealable to the courts. And then Section thirty two twelve does not have any changes either.
Right.
One last thing, I think on page nine, under two major amendments. Um, where it calls out Sections thirty two eleven point one, I think that should be thirty two. Eleven A one.
Yeah, there should be, has to be a letter in there.
And the indenting, uh, it's just formatting, but the indenting in thirty two eleven seems. Aggressive. I mean, the, the As look like there.
They're off a little bit.
Right, well, we've uh, completed the review now in thirty, both Articles thirty two and Articles thirty three. At this point. Holly, Molly, whoever is the appropriate one of you to do this, would you? Identify for us a listing. Of the changes that we have. Made in addition to those that had already. Been made. We had our hearing on the twenty second, and now we've made some additional changes to draft two.
Want to go through them?
So now we'll have a draft three. Uh, with those changes. So potentially tonight, whatever action we choose to take. We would um, take some action. Based upon. The draft that we've reviewed with these additional. Changes listed.
Sure.
To be included in draft three.
So I can start, um, at the beginning of the procedure section, Article thirty two. Um, so in the preamble, we are putting Article thirteen first, and then Article thirty three. Um, changing it from saying defined in this section to defined in this article. Um, and then also a note I have is that making sure the. Trustees are referred to as the Township Board of Trustees throughout the entire document. I have my next change on. Multiplier version, so it's, um, let's see, what is the numbering? It is Section thirty two oh four, B. Sixteen to say landscaping plans in accordance with Section thirteen oh seven and thirteen oh three as applicable will be what's added to the end of that. Section thirty two oh five, um, the second.
You were getting rid of the, um, blue stuff in number twenty.
Yeah.
Oh, I have, I, yep, I already changed it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that one.
Twenty and twenty one.
Um, in Section thirty two oh five, um, accepting the county's recommendation to reword the second paragraph. Section thirty two oh six, um, there's a corrected Township Board of Trustees in there. I'm gonna spell out Ohio Revised Code, Chapter three forty nine here.
Did you want ORC spelled out, or did you just want ORC chapter?
Whatever, whatever is.
We've said Ohio Revised Code in other documents, I'm just gonna.
Okay.
And I think you refer, you refer to Chapter twenty five oh six, I think, in some places. For how an appeal could be.
Right.
So whatever the, whatever the standard is.
So that's, um, there's two changes for that, um, in Section thirty two oh six. Taking the word use. Out of that last sentence. When I should, I think it's. And. NCA.
Well, then you should do a search on that, cause. Wherever you have NCA, you have A NCA. And you could read it two ways.
I will make sure that they all align. Are you going with Ann or?
When you read, when you read it, it should be an NCA, but. Who else is gonna read this aloud?
Yes, I will make sure they all say Ann NCA throughout.
Yep. Okay.
Did you say delete the word use?
Um, and then in Section thirteen, or I'm sorry, thirty two eleven, I just changed the formatting a little bit, so it's a little less. Uh, far to the right. And then in two major amendment in that same section, um, adding. The letter A for, for to read Section thirty two point eleven point eight point one. And that is the last change I had for this procedure section.
And this will come back to us as you see draft three.
Yes.
Or will it?
Unless.
Unless you. I was gonna say, we recommend approval, a little comeback is final. If we make a motion to approve contingent upon these changes, then it's our final one.
That would be.
Which I think is.
That would be the action that I was expecting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hope considered, yes. And that's the reason I wanted to, uh, to review the changes so that we would know what. What they are, and then these are the conditions. That have to be met.
Do we then go on to thirty three and do the same on thirty three?
Uh, yes, we need to do them both, because what, what we're going to be taking action on is going to be approving the application. And it includes both, um. Article thirty two and Article thirty three. It's one application that includes both of these articles, so that'll be forwarded to the trustees. With our recommendation. So Article thirty three.
There's gonna be one second to put it back on the screen here. So Section thirty three oh two is where I have the first change. Um, we're adding Red Bank Road and Hughes Road to the county map or the map of the county's request, and then. We already have the name changed, so that should be the only change there. Section thirty three oh three, we're referencing Article thirty two and Article thirty three throughout this section. And then in paragraph. Five and six, we're going to describe both scenarios if the zoning commission were to recommend approval and recommend denial, and then the same for the Township Board of Trustees. In Section thirty three oh four and C, we're adding as required in Section thirty three oh seven B at the county's request. In thirty three oh seven, C three, um, we are adding of this article to section at the end of Section thirty three oh seven D.
Um, thirty three oh.
Where, where was this one?
This is thirty three oh seven.
C.
D.
Page six.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, thirty three oh seven D.
Um, then going down in that same C in four M. We're changing that to say no residential development. Instead of no development.
Resident, no residential structure.
Structures.
Or.
Structures. Are.
Wait a minute. I'm lost again.
Top of page seven. No residential structures are permitted within.
Then moving on, on the next page in F, uh, perimeter setback.
Oh wait, did you add, uh, and private drives to the all other local?
Where she is right now.
Oh, but you're. On a different page than us.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the clean version, that's just three now, so my page numbers are probably different than yours.
Yeah.
But, um, so that will say all other local roads and private drives. And then below that in stormwater, preventing any upstream or downstream impacts there.
Right.
M, bulk and area requirements, um, I'll add C table thirty three point two.
And then add the title to the table as well.
We'll find, um. Credits for any pictures that don't have credits. Um, in the signs, there was some repeated numbering, and so for temporary signs, it should be three and two. And then going onward there will be corrected. Again, a picture that will be credited in the same section. And that's. That we believe.
That's it, right? Yeah. Not very many changes over where we were, but we've gone through the list. Um, so at this point, before, uh, I would close the, the hearing, I want to again, open it back up. So that if there's any questions or comments. From the public, now's the time for, uh, that to happen. If anyone in the room, uh, here tonight would like to speak, please go to the podium. Again, identify yourself by name and address, and then at. Again, identify yourself by name and address, and then at home, unfortunately, again, since we don't have audio that we can hear you, you'll need to submit your comments uh on the uh chat, and then if there are any, we will read them uh or answer the question that you may submit. Um, someone, yeah, I was gonna say, well, thank you, Molly, you're a great. There's someone that's submitting something.
Looks so. There we go. Oh wait, there might be more up top, give me one second. Interesting. Okay, so Scott says, still trying to wrap my head around wording of the wetlands high water line. High water line has a time element involved, one year, one hundred year, when is the high water determined?
Yeah, they're two different terms, so a hundred year plane is describing a one percent chance of an area that will flood. Any one percent chance per year. Or once in every hundred years is what people like to say. Um, the high watermark is that what it naturally says, what, how high does that water get over each time it you know, rains over, and so I think we could possibly go back and look for a definition of high water line to put in, if you'd like to do that. Um, but I would not go with one hundred year plane, but plane. I would go with the high water line and define.
Well, that's second part there.
Yes.
Well, then, yeah. The hundred year floodplain is defined, then we put in an additional, which is the high watermark beyond that.
Well, Scott wants to know, is it the high watermark for last year or ten years ago or fifty years ago or whatever, if I'm understanding that question right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably the question, so. How do we answer that?
I was looking for a definition to re- get for you right now, but.
This is just, you know, like search, a maximum recorded level or value?
Well, and I found also we could put in something like a mean high water line so that we're we're not worried about one specific year.
We have wherever, um, whatever document you found the.
Yeah, I need to.
Um. Or do you say ordinary high watermark? Do, did, do you say ordinary in what you had?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
I would, ordinary high watermark, that, that's the normal. The mark that can be found by examining the bed and banks and asserting where the presence and actions of waters are so common and usual and so long continued in all ordinary years.
Yeah, so the exceptional year would not be something we'd be looking for, would be the ordinary typical year.
So, who is tracking something like that on these smaller waterways? I guess is my question then, cause if we don't have, like, if it's just the farmer who's like, that out of my field's never been wet before, like, that's not super helpful, we need we need some sort of source that we can go to and say according to whomever. This is where this is, and so I think that's maybe the difference in the floodplain, it's.
The floodplain is defined.
It's defined and it's.
By the core of engineering.
Yes, and so I think, I think that's.
Has a floodplain defined.
That's true too, but a geomorphologist could probably tell you either the floodplain or the high water.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't matter if, if, if it.
So I guess my point is either way, I want to be able to send them to a source to say, this is where you have to look.
Engineer would have to determine it, just like they would if there was a, a, a stream with no floodplain defined by FEMA.
So can we, can we say in there the high watermark as determined by?
A professional engineer.
Yeah.
Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, and that would be at the time that the development plan is being.
Correct.
Uh.
And then you can either agree or disagree, and if you disagree with it, you can pu- pull in your own professional sources.
Do we put that whole same paragraph like we had with?
I don't think so, because you're not dealing with another county agency at that point in time, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we put as determined by professional engineer, that's.
Yeah, so where do we put that language?
Right there where, where we were.
So it'll read, no construction of buildings is allowed inside the one hundred year floodplain. In addition, no residential structures are permitted within a hundred feet of the high water line of a repairing or wetland area as determined by a professional.
Ordinary.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
But they put that word ordinary in.
Yep, and what's the number of this one again?
Thirty three oh seven.
Oh, seven.
E. M.
Page six, I believe, uh, for us. Wait, maybe not.
Yeah.
Never mind.
I need the top page to go over my mind, sorry.
So page seven, so we're putting that as determined by professional engineer.
So it sounds like we've figured things out for Scott.
Yes. He's good.
I don't know, when I looked at the um the high watermark around Duncan Run, some parcels that had been sold. What happens is that the soil type changes, so it moves, it goes from center berg or, or, or powamo, it goes to another type that, it, I forget right now, but it's indicated, i- it indicates that it's been submerged.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume that there's.
That's how an engineer is gonna determine it.
Look at it, say what kind of soil is under this.
My quick little review there is, yes, that's what it was telling me to.
All right, so we've added that additional phrase now. Any other questions or comments that are uh potentially?
Is there something else in chat?
No, he, he just said that made more sense.
Yeah, well, thank you for asking that question, because it is, it was helpful for us to add that clarification. All right, uh, did, did we get through them all?
Yes.
Okay. Thought we had, just wanted to make sure that I had missed something. All right, so now we've got the listing of the potential conditions, if you will, that would be added, we would be taking action on, so. Uh, I'll close the public portion at this point and come back to the zoning commission so that we can at this point then um make a determination, is there any further discussion or are we ready to close the hearing? Not adjourned, close it.
But what would, do we do the motion before we close it or?
No, we'll go back to our meeting.
And then you make your motion.
They will make a motion in our meeting, yes. All right, that sounds like at this point then, uh, we're ready to close the hearing on uh application uh twenty three oh three, and we will um put that also then come out of recess in our special meeting, and I'll call the roll. Once again, and thank you for asking me that. We're closing the, the hearing at nine oh eight. We will open our, uh, bring out a recess, our special meeting for tonight at nine oh eight. And I'm calling the roll. Uh, again, see who's present. Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Mike Kavler, here. Joni Manson.
Here.
Brittany Hopperick.
Here.
All right, we are back in session in our special meeting, at this point now, we can entertain a motion uh to move the process forward.
Uh, let me ask you, the application number is?
It's twenty three oh three?
Twenty three, HTC twenty three oh three.
HTZ C twenty three oh three.
Is that for the proceedings?
Um, articles thirty two and thirty three.
In that case, without my notes, I will make a motion that we recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees approval of proposed articles thirty two and um proposed article thirty two.
It was.
I'm, I'm gonna.
Here's the titles. Proposed article thirty two, here you go.
Procedure to apply the conservation subdivision standards and proposed article thirty three, clustered residential conservation district. Contingent on the changes made this evening. Um, and that, I will have a redline version, I will have a list.
So as outlined in the, the hearing.
Yeah, as, as outlined.
Yes, as outlined during the hearing.
During the hearing. Um, and I should say somewhere in here, um, recommend um approval of application HTZ C twenty three oh three. So does that make any sense?
Yeah, as long as the a- approval of the application represents those changes that we outlined as well.
They recommended approval of application HTC twenty three oh three. With conditionally on the inclusion of the changes that were identified and listed during the hearing. And those changes will be specified in a written statement that will be submitted to us by Holly Mathais' office.
Okay, I'll second that.
Perfect.
Thank you, so I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Well, the only thing that I want to add as a comment before we move forward is to say that thank you very much, Holly and Molly, for uh pulling all this together for us in terms of uh dealing with changes that we went through and identified, and it made this, the process very easy for us to follow and to go through them. Members of the public that you have, that have participated, limited, but we very much appreciate the fact that you took the time to do so. Please encourage more of your fellow residents, especially in the township, to participate more often. We would like to have that happen. Uh, with, with that said, is there any other discussion on the motion itself? Yeah, all right, hearing none, then I'm gonna call for a boy, uh, a roll call vote, and I will call the names. All those in favor, uh, when I call your name, please indicate an aye or a nay vote. Uh, Virginia Lewis.
Aye.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Mike Kavler, aye. Joni Manson.
Aye.
And Brittany Hopperick.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, uh, we are recommending to the trustees that articles thirty two and thirty three uh be approved by the, uh, by the Board of Trustees, and that will happen, we will submit this to them. My understanding is they are going to schedule a special meeting uh to receive our recommendation on June the fifth at nine AM. And then they would take action and schedule a hearing, there would be a hearing scheduled by them at that time, and the reason they wanted to hold the special meeting to receive it is so that they could schedule the hearing at their regular meeting on June the twenty first. So, we'll find out specifically if they do that action, but that is what is anticipated. Okay, with that said, um, any further business to be conducted during our special meeting?
One question.
One, one question? Now you wanna make a motion?
No. We have, it's only, it's only nine fifty.
I know. So you wanna stay longer?
Yeah, we need to make up for our ten o'clock meeting.
What do we do about definitions?
I think.
What do we do about the definitions?
The definitions?
What about them?
We just.
They've already been approved.
Yeah.
They were approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think so now we go through with Scott, and when we're updating everything else, we're eventually going to combine
they will be.
These definitions with article four.
Yeah, with article four, but as of right now. Uh, they were, the definitions are the same for these documents as they were, and we approved those uh, the last year, and the trustees have approved them.
Yep.
But they're not merged into article four yet.
No, they would not be merging to article.
Into article four, but the motion to approve them was to merge them with article four, so.
So they will be once they have.
The.
Okay, that was my question.
When the trustees approved them, that was part of what was discussed, yes.
And that started the thirty day period for anybody to start.
Yes, that, that would be true.
Yeah, that's almost over, right?
Thirty day period?
Yeah, that almost over?
That half.
Uh, no, I'm not sure how far into it we are, maybe halfway.
Halfway.
Okay, all right, then at this point, a motion for our meeting to be adjourned would be in order, I think.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Virginia will second.
Moved by Brittany, seconded by Virginia to adjourn the special meeting. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, pose no.
It's nine sixteen, by the way.
Now, before you leave, I need you to sign this, okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There you go. And this goes with the, this will go to the trustees.